America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, on a mission, under God, in this law, liberty and justice are.
Just added two identifiers. All right, can I have a motion to, for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a move. I'll make mine. Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Now I would take a motion to approve the, from the April 12 meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Oh, okay, sorry, that was for the April 12 meeting and the April 26 meeting. That brings us to presentations.
This evening, we have Mr. Jeff Mollison presenting the school safety updates for the district.
Thank you, everybody. So, Jacob told me that I could go a little bit less than I did the last time, so that forty-five minutes, I promise you, no more than forty-two.
Okay, you can add my third.
Well, there we go, so now I can go a little bit more. Thank you, Karen, I appreciate your time. So, I'm gonna give you a little bit of an update here on some of the safety steps that we have taken here. School violence statistics, in two thousand twenty-three, so far this year, there have been a hundred and twenty-nine shooting incidents with seventy-nine wounded and twenty-three killed in the United States. Nine of these shooting incidents have occurred in New York State. And although school shootings are what most people think of with respect to school violence, stabbings, bomb threats, and other forms of violence play a major part, we always think of the shooting part, and that's usually the statistic we, we think of, but there obviously are other aspects as well. Uh, school safety information, I would share information on our school's security measures, but I will not give details on many aspects, so we, uh, do not compromise some of our systems. We're gonna make sure that, um, there's some things we just don't want to divulge. Steps we have taken, we had a security assessment, uh, performed for both the junior and senior high school and the elementary school. Uh, this assessment was completed by Armor One late in two thousand twenty-two, and reports were issued in January and February, and there have been a number of recommendations that were made in those reports that we have been working on, taking action, and there were a number of steps that they recommended that we had been working on already or in process. Uh, we renumbered all the schools in the junior, senior high to allow for government application. They've renumbered, renumbered the school now as numbered without needing to call attention to a wing. So, we used to have, you know, A, B, A-link, B-link, C-link. What drove me nuts was that I had like three room one-twenty-threes, or, you know, two room one-sixteens, but one was at A-link, one was in B-link, and it got very confusing, because you have to make sure that we designated the link and then the room number. Now, all the room numbers are unique. Um, from a security standpoint and a student and visitor perspective, it's not much easier to find a specific room, because again, they are not all unique. Uh, we have added wayfinder signs around the, uh, high school, and will continue to add more signs in locations to show a need from them. These signs will help new students and visitors to easily navigate our buildings. There will also be significant age first responders who need to locate, to locate a room quickly, so, uh, this one is right outside the cafeteria. When you walk up the hall, when you leave here tonight, look to your left, you're gonna see a sign right there that points down this way for technology, for the gymnasium, that way for the pool. So, and then if you go up the hallway too, before you would go to what used to be the C-link, there's a sign there that tells you all the rooms that are up there, auditorium and so on. So, especially for a new student coming in here to next year, I think that'll be a lot easier for the new students to find their way around, and if you're also a first responder, not familiar with the building, um, another aid to get you where you need to go. Uh, we have added room numbers to the windows. Uh, these are positioned in such a manner that they represent the left end of the room when you're facing the building. You can tell from the outside which windows are part of any room. Windows between two sets of numbers represent, represent the room whose number is to the left. Elementary school will have, will follow. I noted here that we have to have the phones reprogrammed at the elementary school. Um, we're gonna change the room numbers, we have all the signs for that. We're gonna do the same things we did at the high school, but, um, Jen has asked me to wait until we get the rooms reprogrammed, so that we made dial a number that matches with the room, so we're working on that with IP. But if you look here, I know this is really difficult to see, but this says room one thirty-four, down here is one thirty-two A, and this is one thirty. So, these two windows here represent room one thirty-two A, and then all these windows here are part of room one thirty-four. So, that's consistent across the building, so anybody from the outside, the police officers out are trying to identify which room, uh, is, is a problem, they can identify all the windows that are, are part of that room. We've installed room numbers inside each room in an obvious location. In case of an emergency, it will be easy to know which room you aren't in without having to leave the room. You would be amazed at how many staff and students only know the room by the teacher and not the room number. In an emergency, stating you are in Mrs. Recker's room is not as helpful as stating I'm in room one fifty-five. I, I go, it's even in the offices I will go in, and I will ask where certain teacher is, and we don't always, they know where the teacher is, but they don't know the room number or, or so on, so... If you are in a room, it's an emergency, they're all, as you can see, right next to the clock. We put them in a very obvious position, if there's ever anything in there, you're in the room and you're calling for help, you'll know which room you're in. Uh, we have added exterior door numbers to all the perimeter doors, signs that have a bar under the number indicate they have access control, excuse me, access control on them. Doors out of bar typically inaccessible from the outside, so you can see the little line under here, these are all reflective signs too, so that means you could get in with a badge or a fob. These are the doors that are right up the hall. Um, these are new school doors with a wood grain finish. The right door has access control lock and a card reader, which is on the right side of the wall. There's our card reader. Um, also, as you can see, there's one of the wayfinder signs that I was talking about. By closing this door, we have access to the school from athletics every after-school hours. Right now, those doors are closed, so my staff can go through with their badge, but the doors are always locked, um, and there's only limited number of people who have the key to that lock that's locked. Uh, we have added mask notifications signs through large spaces within both buildings. These message boards will flash, uh, their lights will show lockdown on their display, and also deliver an audible message of lockdown. Uh, these have been added to the junior, senior high, uh, aquatic center, fitness center, technology room, cafeteria, course room, and the elementary school has them in library and gymnasium. We already have them in, like, the media center here has them. Uh, we have one here in the, yes, in the gym here, there's also one in the cafeteria at the elementary school, so we had some, and we've added some more. Those are, as you can see, quite large, so in larger room, uh, they really help to notify you when you are in a lockdown. Uh, we have added more than sixty cameras to our video surveillance system since I've been here, which is more than doubling what we had just three years ago. We've also used locations to add multi-head cameras, which allows us to get good value for our investment instead of putting sometimes at three separate cameras up there. New technology is that, that particular camera head right there has three cameras inside of it. So, we're able to buy more for less, if you will. Um, and really, you can't look at that camera and know which way everything's pointing, but we get, we have now a lot more coverage than we had in the past, for sure. We have alarm doors, so that we receive an instant message if that specific door is open during the school day. Um, I'm not gonna tell you which doors those are, but the doors that have that feature sends a, a message immediately to the high school, middle school office, so they know which door's been opened, uh, which, not the main doors, but other doors around the perimeter. And they do that, they pull up the camera right away, look to see who went in or out of that door. We've added signs around the junior high school. Uh, this one is right outside for the aquatic center and the fitness center. Down a little further to the right is the one that points to the gym, and you know that the entrance when you come in, we also have that wayfinder sign that points to parking, athletic fields, straight ahead for the transportation and at the elementary school. We have added signs, uh, stating the rules for playground use. There are two signs at each playground at the elementary school. We needed to get something up there just basically when older kids shouldn't be on that, on the equipment, and we noted that ages, it should be on there. Uh, it's open from dusk till dawn, those type of things, just guidelines, so if somebody's there, you can't come there, shouldn't be here, yes, those are rules. Uh, some things we were planning to do, shown is a blue warning strobe on the outside of the junior, senior high. There's currently one strobe at each building, we plan to add seven more to each building. So, you can see the blue strobe that's above the doors right as you came in through the gym entrance, that strobe flashes if we are in a lockdown situation. And it's warning if you are up at the, the trap, if you have gym class up there, P.E. class, you're coming down through the building, you see that strobe, it's basically warning you to stay away. We are gonna, again, stagger those around the building, so it's very visible. Uh, we will also be adding some speakers to the outside of the school, so we get a, a little bit of an audible warning as well, which takes us to the next one. Uh, we will be adding exterior speakers to both buildings. The elementary school has them, but we're gonna have one or two more, and then we're going to tie them into our lockdown system. I don't know why, but that was tied in, so when we do enter into lockdown, it's not being broadcast uh, to the outside, which it should be, it's gonna have a simple fixed day automation. Our members are working on doing that for us right now. Um, the junior, senior high does not appear to really have any working speakers on the outside. We're gonna add eight to the outside of the building. I think it's very important, it's a communication device in event of emergency. Again, if you are outside, sunny day, it's hard to see that flashing blue strobe, but if you're gonna hear the audible noise, lockdown, lockdown, you're gonna notice, stay away. So, we have two, one's visual, one's audible. Uh, we will be adding new corridor signs in each hallway in both buildings. There will be at least two signs in each hallway that will, this will help with the navigation and better location identification. I'm in the hallway by Mrs. Recker's room, it's not as good as I'm in corridor seven. Signs were just received, and they'll be installed shortly. This was when I was at Waterloo, you know, several years back, we had identified the corridors for similar reasons, because everybody said I'm in the English wing, I'm in the math wing. I had no idea where the English wing was and where the math wing was, and if you are a police officer and you're coming into the building and somebody tells you they're in the English wing, good luck. So, we'll make sure we number them, make sure everybody notices which corridor they're in. Uh, things we are planning to do, keyless entry for all the classrooms and offices in both the high school and elementary school, expect an installation date, I have the question marks. Um, starting next week, they're gonna start pulling the wire for the keyless entry, so that piece is going to start. The whole issue with, uh, shipment right now is the chip for the readers for inside the, the locks. So, you know, we've had chip issues for cars, we also have them for other things such as the locks, so, right now, we're looking at probably September, October for those locks. This is like over a year, but it's, again, a chip issue. Uh, Vocera smart badges, the purchase order was issued last month through Bosse's, so those badges, the smart badges are on order. We don't have a delivery date yet on those, but, uh, that is in process. Uh, window film, shadowproof treatment, we did receive a quote with what, what we will do, um, with that, I'm not gonna get into details how that's gonna work, but that's one thing we're working on. Uh, we'll talk about adding SRO through Patriot, uh, protection investigations. I believe Mr. Heen has spoken about that, correct? And, uh, further detailed investigation into software applications such as Navigate Prepared and the Tap App, we, um, already have Navigate Prepared, something the district had purchased in the past. We're looking at that and kind of activating it, putting some more time into it, and we're gonna compare it with the Tap App and see which one is the, is the best way for the district to go. Other points of interest, uh, we have monthly district safety meetings. We discuss concerns at each building when we have those meetings. Uh, anybody that's in that meeting attends, tell them a prompt, we need to address and so on. I'm a member of the Monroe County Schools and Community Safety Consortium, which has over a hundred members and meets monthly to discuss school safety concerns. Our next meeting is May twenty-third in Greece. Um, I have sent the briefs from Armor One, the latest, on the latest school shootings, which never, uh, you know, fun to read, but it's a good read because you learn mistakes and you learn things that you should do in, in your district, um, that would be different than, you know, problems they have in those instances. Uh, Senator Mayer, who is the committee on education chair, has reached out to my association, School Facilities Association, for feedback on a bill concerning sharing information for law enforcement. Uh, School Facilities Association is well-respected and, and informed concerning school safety matters. This was a meeting we just had on Monday. Basically, the state's looking for each district to supply prints of their schools, exact layout where all your utilities are and so on, which we do pretty much in a safety plan. This is beyond that. The problem that we see with this, the districts are gonna spend a lot of time making sure they have the prints that they want, they get loaded up into the state, but obviously, they go from the state to the people that need them. And that part, they don't have our docs, so it's just, we expressed our concerns with it. We're gonna spend all this time, all this money to give you prints to do this, but yet, how are you going to have somebody there who's gonna guarantee that the latest and greatest prints are gonna be distributed to the nine-one-one centers and to the police officers? Uh, I will be attending the ASI, ASI American Society for Industrial Security International's chapter presentation on school safety tomorrow in Rochester. The, uh, safety director from Fairport High School will be giving that presentation tomorrow. Um, and just note, we added, created a new master key that we utilized with the keyless entry and also being implemented on all perimeter doors. And even a door at the end of the corridor here, I'd say that a room has that key. It's limited in who has it. You didn't want this key floating around everywhere, you shouldn't need it, you have a fault, you get it on out of that. So, we'll be for the first responders and to select few of the districts. Question? Was I quoting my question? Yes, sir?
Did you, did you have your cameras? I believe it's, yeah, but who, who monitors that? They say somebody's walking around, you know, at five, ten-thirty in the morning. Who, who monitors that?
I will be honest with you, for the most part, the cameras serve a purpose in, in investigating an event, because of the number of cameras that we have, I mean, it would take multiple screens and multiple people to sit there and look at all the cameras. We have to try to look through a lie and feed. But if there is an instance, I could look it up at home. So, if I could be home and somebody called me and said, Jeff, I saw somebody at the parking lot tonight, we could do that. Um, I would say that we have a camera that's so strong that I could read a license plate. So, we would know who would go in and around. So, there's, uh, that, I don't wanna get into too much, but yes. Mr. Heen?
Jeff, can you explain the Vocera device again?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Some of us might not be familiar.
Okay, so the Vocera is really big, and I think, Jen, you use it in hospitals, correct?
Correct.
So, that's really where it started there, and it's now worked its way into school. So, it is a badge, it looks like a badge, it goes around your neck, that is probably, um, the size of a flip phone that's folded down. And it has a, you know, little digital screen on it. Uh, and it's a really, it's like having an Alexa around your neck, I guess is the best way to explain it. So that you could use it hands-free. So, in a hospital, I believe, if it's a nurse and she's using, you know, she's with a patient, she could basically call for help without having to free her hands and just say, you know, Vocera, please call Dr. Smith, I need him in room, and Dr. Smith then will answer. Hey, I have an emergency, room one-two-three, whatever. So, for us, the Vocera, contact maintenance, or any of you guys near the high school who have a response, I need you to go into and do this. Um, in the case of an emergency, you know, it could, uh, it could be Vocera, contact emergency response team, and then we go out to whoever that was on it, emergency response. We have an incident in room one-twelve, we need to respond. Um, you could also signal a lockdown. We need to go into lockdown, I have the incident, and, and you can identify the incident. We could, there's a lot of powerful aspects to it, I'm not getting into, into all the details of it, but it is a, a great tool, we were able to get it with Bosse's aid. Um, and basically have enough for, we have enough for every, all our staff members and extras, which is really great, because if you're a teacher too, that has a sub for the day, the sub can come in your office and pick one up, and it could be, you could just say, first grade sub, logging in, and then you're into that system. And then you could use it if anything happens in first grade, or somebody pages to first grade, first grade teachers, and then they'd be able to hear that. Um, I think it's a great tool, I really do. It's, it's very powerful, I think it's gonna help. You and I wander little things through the school, where it's, boy, it would have been nice to have the Vocera that day. I think we did, or we lost the power for communications back and forth, we're running around trying to find everybody. And unlike a two-way radio, um, you could also, you could have a private conversation with it, you could bring it up, put it up to your phone. We could direct phone calls from a parent that may come in and send it right to your Vocera. So, you could almost eliminate all the phones in our classrooms, because you could just have the, have the Vocera, put it up to your ear and have a conversation. Um, and it's very powerful, it's great. I'm really excited about getting it, and, and I think it'll be cool. Anthony?
Jeff, do we have, uh, do we actually fit in all these door latches for at the elementary school and high school, like the, all the classrooms? Do they already have the latches, or do they have to be retrofitted?
So, the new lock, it's a whole mechanism.
It's a whole mechanism?
So, they, they make it so that, with, most of the locks we have here at the high school are mortis locks. So, we've done a survey of every lock, every door in the district that's gonna get the keyless entry. So, these new locks are fitted right to it. So, the project includes removing the old locks, putting the new system in place, and that's all done by our vendor, Day Automation with Kelly Brothers is the vendor who does all the, will do the actual installation piece of it.
Now, they'll come in, they'll put the, what's with the locks, and they'll carve out the holes and, you know, individual door box and, you know...
Yeah, everything will be in there, so it's just a turnkey system, if you will.
Correct.
And, you know, the really cool thing about the keyless entry too, is the way you could program the keyless locks. So, you could have it programmed so that, let's just say the bells, you know, the bell rings at the end of class at nine o'clock, and then, you know, second bell's at nine oh five, the kids have five minutes to get in. You can unlock all the doors at nine o'clock, and then if you want, you could lock all the doors at nine oh five automatically, so you don't let the kids come in because they're late. We could do that. There's, there's a lot of ways that, when we go into lockdown, you don't have to worry about if the key, teacher turns her key, she has her door locked, soon as you hit the lockdown on those electronic locks, bam, we're all locked down. So, from a safety perspective too, they're great. You can unlock and, and any lock that we want remotely, um, and then we also have a, a record of who entered any classroom, because you can't get in without a fob or a badge. So, we know who, who went in and when they went into any, any room in the district. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to reports and correspondence, um, central administration. We have the resolution for Patriot Protection on the agenda tonight. Um, we have public hearing earlier tonight, uh, explaining about, all about that. And also our budget votes next week on Tuesday, so come out and vote.
And I was just gonna just share, um, where we are with the Patriot's security. We have our public hearing this evening at six o'clock. Uh, that was the first step that we made prior to the resolution, which is on the chat this evening, so we are moving forward with contracting out with Patriot Protection Investigations. We all have.
Building administration, you all got the reports from there? Any questions on that? Let's get it back.
As the end of the year approaches, it feels like events have been flying one after another. Our senior trip to Universal was an absolute blast. Being able to spend a week with classmates brought us closer together and helped some of us form friendships with people we haven't really hung out with a lot. We had tons of fun going on all the rides and immersing ourselves in the environment. My group's favorite ride was the velocicoaster, which we went on four times. Thank you to all the chaperones, our advisors, and everyone who made it possible for us to have such a great last experience with our class. Girls' softball recently had success on Monday, winning both games of their doubleheader. Watching home softball and baseball games is always fun. The tennis team has been rejuvenated this year with many more meets and several wins. This track season has been a success as we enter our championship season next week. Several school records have been broken this year, such as the pentathlon by myself and the four-hundred meter by Ashton Rattray, who has reached the super standard in the two-hundred meter dash. The whole team is excited to see what we can do in the upcoming championships. The student council has been very busy preparing for interclass games this Friday. Every class is going all out with their banners and themes this year, and we are excited to introduce a fun dance battle competition that each class has prepared. For Teacher Appreciation Week, we organized goodie bags for all the teachers that we handed out today. After interclass games, all hands are on deck for working to create a fabulous moving-up day. Last night was the combined high school band and chorus concert, and it was a blast to be able to still perform with my classmates for one last time, at least until the cabaret jazz band concert, that is. On the horizon, prom is on everyone's mind. If it's anything like last year, it's sure to be an unforgettable night. For many of us seniors, graduation also leans ahead, and we are very proud for our hard work that has taken us this far, and we will continue, and will continue to help us wherever our next step's taken us. Thank you.
When is the prom?
It's, uh, June second, I believe.
Third.
Third, thank you.
All right, uh, board member comments? Okay, board committee reports?
Audit report, if you have one. So, in the audit report, uh, covering periods, uh, December fourteenth through March eleventh, we had a couple second discover, but they were correct, and I'm gonna go back.
Uh, policies for our great straightforward this month, and we'll have our next meeting on the thirtieth, I think. And I forgot when we...
It's all month eight.
Okay, that brings us to public forum. The board encourages courteous and respectful public comment at board meetings. All speakers must conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, harassing language, defamatory statements, and threats of violence are prohibited. All participants are required to comply with the district's code of conduct. In the interest of meeting efficiency, public comments should be kept within the Board of Education's five-minute guideline and not to exceed thirty minutes total. Do we have any public comments?
At the last board of education meeting, a member of the community expressed his concerns for the books that are in our school library. He called the books that we, we students are reading filth, however, this is simply not true. In the books, People Kill People by Ellen Hopkins, All Boys Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson, and It Ends With Us by Colleen Hoover, there's a bigger picture to each story. The community member that came to this meeting read scenes from each of these books completely out of context and has admitted to not reading any of them. If an argument is to be made, then a whole story must be present to get a fair judgment. People Kill People is a book that covers topics such as white supremacy and gun violence. The story has six teams, and for each of them, they see guns as a solution to their problems. This, this story is not a happy one, it talks about people resorting to violence and how anyone could kill someone. The part of this book the community member mentioned was a rape scene and a backstory to one of the characters. These teams are people who are at the lowest points, and they each have their own story. This book does not glamorize gun violence or white supremacy in any way, and the characters are difficult to empathize with on purpose. This story is very effective with the theme that seemingly normal people with their own lives can become killers. People Kill People by Ellen Hopkins is a powerful book with a deep meaning. All Boys Aren't Blue is about the author's life growing up black and queer in New Jersey. The author does not hide anything throughout this book as it is a biography, and he's talking about his real life experiences. It mentions topics such as masculinity, sexual assault, and death of a loved one, all while facing the struggles of being black and queer. Towards the end of the book, the author starts to accept himself, and he wrote these books in hopes that he, he'd help others in similar positions that are also struggling with identity. The reason why there are such mature scenes is because the author wants to be real with the readers. All Boys Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson gives black and queer youth a story they can relate to. It Ends With Us is a romance novel where the main character grew up in an abusive home, which also lets her get into a sexually, physically, and emotionally abusive relationship. She was able to lead that relationship despite the abuse coming from the father of her child, which is one of the hardest choices a person can make. She decided she didn't want her daughter to witness and feel the same abuse that she did while growing up. It's a happy ending as the main character does find closure for herself and is in a happy relationship by the end of the story. It Ends With Us by Colleen Hoover is fictional, but is fictional, but gives a real insight to the impact of abusive relationships. In the end, these books are stories, stories that students can pick up to read in class in Vanna's library. I speak on behalf of the student body when I say that we don't want our books to start being... being banned. Books contain stories that affect real people, allows them to be seen, to be heard, and to spread where it is. When we start putting books under review and potentially banning them from our library, we are silencing people's voices. It's important to remember that books on our shelves can help young minds feel validated. While I understand where this community member was coming from, because it is mature content, there are other solutions to take these books off our shelves. These books have a bigger impact than the filth he mentioned. Thank you.
Leah? I think we should applaud Leah's courage. I think. It's great. Do we have anyone else?
Yeah. So my name is Joanne Salerno, and I have lived in Clyde my entire life. I am a former school board member. I'm a speech-language pathologist who serves Eastern Wayne County. I'm a trauma and poverty consultant, and I am the co-founder and CEO of Glow Up Girl, an organization across Wayne County to empower girls in grades three through 12. I brought with me today some of the statements that come from some of the groups that I work with. These are all written in complete anonymity, so we do not know who is making these statements, but these are statements from girls that we serve every day, both in our schools and in our organizations, and this is their voice and this is what's on their mind. When I was five, I was raped by my stepfather, so to this day, I only hang out with girls and don't trust men. My mom slaps me because I yell at my sisters. I'm not, I'm reading every one in the envelope, I'm not choosing which ones to read. My dad drinks too much and then he yells and hits my mom. My brother has to go to the hospital for mental health. I have anxiety and I'm claustrophobic. I live with abuse and neglect. Another group, another day. I got raped at age six. People in the sixth and seventh grade call me fat and ugly. They say that's where my dad left us. I'm sad all the time. My friends try to help, but it doesn't work. I think of killing myself. My mom's in the hospital now because she tried to kill herself. My dad uses drugs. I got a notebook from my therapist. I like potatoes. Another group, another day. I try to kill myself. My parents are detached. I had to go to the mental hospital because I was very depressed. I need coping strategies. I get abused. Parents fighting. On Christmas, my Papa was really sick, really bad. I learned that he was in the hospital because of a drug overdose. Getting bullied. My brother tried to kill me on Christmas. I am worried I might have to go to summer school because I'm failing classes. My dog's gonna pass away soon, and it's very scary because he's been with me my whole life. Bad brains. Another envelope, another day. Sometimes I feel that women are being judged just because they found out who they are. I used to have a brother who used to be abused because he came out that he was gay, and because of that, I'm scared to tell my parents that I'm bi. I was abused for almost 10 years, but I finally spoke up for myself and I told my mom, and she called the cops, and my stepdad is in my life now and he stopped him. I'm almost 13 and I have PTSD and trauma from it. People never respect how I feel or take the time to understand. People are being rude and calling me names. I didn't do anything wrong to these people who are doing this. Having a toxic family, and then this is personal, and discloses personal information, so I'm not gonna read it here. But these are children, right? And so withholding books isn't gonna save these children from the experiences that they are having in their homes. I'm gonna review some of what she just said. It Ends With Us is a story about a girl who has an extremely difficult life, living in a toxic home with lots of trauma. But she works hard, never gives up, and overcomes some of her trauma. All Boys Aren't Blue is about a queer black man's triumphs and trials. He was severely bullied as a child, having his teeth kicked out of his head at the age of five. People Kill People is a compelling story about gun violence and white supremacy. I chose those books because it's my understanding that they were brought up here in the past. These books, across the board, speak to the reasons that people use primarily when they are asking to ban books, and that's to protect our children. But our children do need to be protected, and it's not from books. The things they're exposed to are concerns for some people. Things like sexual contact, LGBTQ community, and exposure to violence. What these books really bring to our children is experience and ideas. Some of them are very different from their own, and when this happens, when they read different ideas, they, this fosters awareness, tolerance, compassion, and empathy. Some children reading these books are being exposed to ideas and lives that are exactly like their own, and this fosters connection, community, validation, and a sense of belonging. These books are not porn. They do represent sexual scenarios in some cases with a point that helps the book make its point. What they are filled with is opportunity. Opportunity for our marginalized groups and children to read books about people and characters just like themselves, and this helps them to feel less marginalized. We know that the primary cause of suicide, drug addiction, and drug overdose is isolation. While there is nothing in the pages of any of these books that most of our middle school and high school students haven't heard or seen in their video games, their streaming networks, or on basic cable, what is present for some is a life-saving connection to characters that they identify with. A book has never killed anybody, but books save lives every day. I wanna thank Judy Blume for helping me through my own traumatic childhood. Don't take the books away.
I'm definitely not going to be as eloquent as these two, but also there's a lot of validity here. Someone who works with these children that are dealing with some of these issues that these books address every day, I don't wanna cry, but, you know, those are the thoughts that go through my head when I saw the titles of these books, is that these are real stories that children are going through, some of them, most of them silently. Why? Because they don't feel comfortable going to a community member to share their stories. They might not even feel comfortable going to their own parents, because perhaps these scenes are created by their own parents. So what can they do? Perhaps they can go and find a book that relates to their story, something that can empower them and give them courage to maybe fight another day, or find a way out, or perhaps just give them hope for that moment. I think there's definitely another way to handle the book situation. I don't think they need to just be taken from our shelves. I question why? When these books have a great message, if anybody has taken the time to read any of them, in two weeks' time, I'm a slow reader, there's no way I read three books, but I have started some of the books, and I've definitely got some feedback, kinda spoiled a book for me because I got it in full detail from a teacher slash parent who works with children, obviously a teacher, you know, about the book, and you've got two beautiful recaps of the books. They're unique, their descriptions are unique, so even from a literary perspective, it's good for our kids to be reading something like this. Yes, empathy and compassion for those who don't live in those situations, for the kids that are silently living in these situations. You know, instead of taking the books off the shelves, my god, Glow Up Girl, right there, you are making a serious impact for children. Something that can, where they can go and escape, an adult that they can trust and maybe confide in. Well, that's kind of my point, is there is another way to handle this. These books are good books, are a pleasure to read. Yes, they do have mature content, and maybe perhaps we can label that in the library so that kids who are of age, you know, these are their books. The younger ones perhaps, you know, they stay away from that. Also, trust our librarian. You know, my son has had interaction with the librarian where she has told him, well, you know, maybe, maybe you shouldn't read this, this is of mature, maybe she didn't say that, this is just my interpretation, but she did inform him. He was informed that the book that he was going to take out was of mature content, you know? And we are growing young adults, so we can't hide everything from them. We can't protect them from everything. The world is full of scenarios, really, that need our attention. Kids that are going through these things, they need our attention. They need people to stand up for them, they need people to be the voice for them, because nobody takes kids seriously. They don't listen. We need to be the ones to listen. Books help them. Books help them to find comfort when they have none.
I'm the community member in question. In honor of my meeting with the librarian, and in honor of the defense of the books about men anal raping each other, I'm going to yield the first five seconds of my time for any eye rolls or scoffs that we may want to get out of the way. Good? Got it out of your system? Awesome. To help out the community member free committee built by the superintendent and no one else, come to a conclusion about the books I reported last month. I'm going to read a few sentences here to give that committee a frame of reference to work against, compare and contrast, help them in the process. But, alright, here's the interesting part. To keep it interesting, and to keep your attention, even if you got all of your eye rolls out of the way already, I'm gonna do this through a trivia contest. After I read something, I want you guys to guess where it came from. It's multiple choice, I wanna make it easy. The choices are A, did it come from a line of dialogue in a pornographic movie? B, is it a book in the Clyde Savannah School? C, is it a red herring created by some Jesus freak to push his conservative agenda? Or D, is it a text message from a married man to someone that's not his wife? You guys ready? You got those four options? Alright, let's begin. The tight black curls of his pubic hair surrounded his erection. It's wet, tipped, and urgent, and you stroke it with your fingers. You find his penis and guide it toward the entrance of your vagina. It feels thick there, sort of scary, and there's a moment when you wonder how on earth it will fit inside you. But James doesn't rush you, and you lower yourself onto him, his hands gentle on your face.
I'm sorry, but you made your point, and with the obscene language and that, you wanted to stick to the code of conduct, so do you have a specific book that you wanted to talk about, a title?
Of those four options, which one do you think it was?
I just wanna know if you have another book.
I do.
Okay.
Alright, so...
Do you have a name?
Of the one I just read from?
Sure.
Okay, it wasn't a line of dialogue from a porn, it wasn't a red herring created by some Jesus freak to push his conservative agenda, and it wasn't a text message from a married man to someone that's not his wife. It in fact was, you're right, one of your own books that your own board, according to the selection of library multimedia materials, policy 8320, that your own board approved of. So if your own board approves of this book being in the library, why would you not approve of it being read? The book is Red Hood by Alana K. Arnold, page 105. It gets steamier from there if you're interested.
What do the pages before that say?
I'm not allowed to read from there. Next, remember, this next thing I'm about to read. Is it a line of dialogue from a porn? Is it a book in the Clyde Savannah School?
B, a book in the Clyde Savannah School. You can stick the dramatics.
You're a spoiler. Is it a red herring created by some Jesus freak to push his conservative agenda? Or is it D, a text message from a married man to someone who's not his wife? Alright.
Please remember the language.
Of...
Of what you're saying.
Okay, I will remember.
Number one, because you're in the presence of students who are not making the choice to read that book.
Correct.
Okay, but you think they should have the choice to read the potential of the book?
Then that's their choice, not being forced.
But how would they know if it's in the book or not?
Doesn't matter.
Alright, I will, I will make this PG-13 to appease the hypocrites in the audience. "Open your mouth," Scott says, and I do. He puts "it," "it," between my lips and grabs my hair and pulls my hat up and down. A moment later, he groans and something slimy spurts into my mouth. He claps his head back.
Again, you made your point. Do you have another book?
I didn't say anything, I just said "it."
We get your point, sir. Do you have another book, a title that you wanted us to check into?
Alright, so was that A, a line of dialogue from a pornographic movie?
I just wanted to know what the title of the book is.
So are you, is your guess B, a book in your own school that you approved?
I have a game.
I'm not playing a game either. Is that a book that you approved in your own school or is it?
You wanted us to play it.
Oh, you're right, you got me. It is a game. So is it a book that you, this board in front of me, approved to be in the school? I'll let you know. It is. You approved it. The name of the book is Jesus Land, a memoir by Julia Shears, page 112. Alright, so in conclusion...
Five minutes is up, sir.
The other people got more than five at time, though. Should a concerned community member wait 60 days?
Do you have, is this your conclusion now?
Yeah, this conclusion. It is one, two, three sentences. There's a semi-colon, so it's the third sentence is the whole. Should a concerned community member wait 60 days for the people who allowed this in the school to begin with to be the ones to determine if it should remain there? What other choices do we have? Fill out endless forms, respond to placating emails, all the while, children in our town are fed sexual deviancy. To everyone who hears these words here, present today, and to everyone who will hear the words in the video that I post, I urge you, first and foremost, beyond all of this, repent of your sins and believe in Jesus Christ. He's faithful and just and forgive you of all of your unrighteousness, and instead, give to you His own righteousness. That's first. Second, do everything you can to stop co-parenting with politicians, remove your children from the government schools, and protect them from the grooming that happens within its walls. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public forum? Seeing none, we move on to the superintendent. I am in motion to approve today's superintendent. Close. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into executive session for the purpose of the act.
I'm looking for two.
Sir. We're in executive session at 7:55. All in favor? Opposed?